Selective leaders to the flag for the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, individual, liberty, and justice.
So, two additions I'd like to propose would be an executive session at whatever point you see fit to discuss some personnel items. And I did also want to touch upon our next upcoming meeting is on New Year's Eve. Just saying, thought we could talk about that under new business.
Okay.
And I think that's all that I have. There are some items from Jonas, quite a bit of items from Jonas regarding grants as they pertain to the library predominantly. And he is hoping to be here by 8:30. And he did fill me in on it, however, I was feeling most comfortable if he were the one that touched upon everything because he's way better first in it. So, I don't know if we want to maybe wait for him until a little later.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And then that's it, I think.
Okay. When do you guys want to go into executive session and some personnel issues that we need to discuss? At the end, or?
Just that one issue.
Well, I have one, but okay, two is small.
Two small issues that the clerk and the treasurer need to talk to us in private about. So when?
Whatever fits their agenda, I mean.
I think we could go into the other room and discuss it.
Perhaps earlier than later because it would give Jonas time to get here.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know if that... Then we can send.
Okay, then we can get these guys out. So, if you guys are all right, we'll go into the other room during the reports, just before the reports and go over it. It shouldn't take us very long, right? Okay. All right. So, introduction of those present, I think we're all counted for. Approval of previous minutes, what's everybody think of those?
We have a copy, so I guess I don't have any problem.
Oh, there's no copies of minutes printed.
Oh, right here. Draft.
Yep.
There are copies in there. It says draft. Oh, no, those are...
Those are planning commissions.
Again, you know what, there were no, there was a little bit of a crossboard on printing, I think, of documents.
Do you, do you, I just sent them.
Is mine okay?
Oh, wait, this is...
Those are not our minutes.
Those are all planning commission, okay.
Sorry, stand by.
No free requests either and no announcements?
The only announcement that I had was that the Better Roads grant was submitted, which is really exciting, so hopefully that all goes well. And then both of the insurance claims were also submitted.
Okay.
So, when do we want to reschedule the December 31st meeting? To what day?
Do you want to just push it to the 30th? Is that suitable with everyone?
Monday?
Probably forward a day or...
Monday?
You know.
Yeah.
Move it to Monday?
It probably makes things work smoother for...
Does it work for you guys? Yeah. They would need to sign a check.
Move it forward instead of back.
Right, because it would be, it would be Thursday before the meeting would work and that's payday and all kinds of stuff like that, right?
Yeah, and I get hours still overdone Monday mornings, occasionally, so I can't get everything done for Monday.
Everything could be done for Monday night, okay. Is everybody good with that? We'll come on the 30th, huh?
I will put the warning behind me. Those two desks are good, I'll bring the others out. Thank you.
She's got some...
She's doing some more.
I ran them over at lunch, so I was pretty, I didn't see anything that I didn't, it seemed out of luck for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I had to chuckle with the speed signs they've got down in my saw in Manchester. Were you naughty or nice?
Naughty or nice?
I was naughty.
You were naughty?
Yes.
Came through Manchester yesterday and there was a woman out taking pictures of it.
Okay.
Standing out in the street taking pictures of this, of the speed limit sign actually. Well, I wasn't here, so I'll, you know, I'll just listen to whoever approves in seconds.
We got that narrowed down?
Yep.
Make the motion to accept the minutes.
Know what might be in there?
I'll second.
Wouldn't you like to know?
Okay. Yeah, motion and second, any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Close, carried. So, we rolled right down, so we could go, before the reports, we could go into executive session for a couple of quick issues. So, does somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we'll just go in the office and then we'll resume the meeting when we come out. Executive session?
I'll make the motion and we come out of executive session with no decisions made.
All in favor, second?
Second, I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carried. Zoning administrators' report, which is going to be coming later, right?
If you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, we'll give them to the end of the night and then, and then by default, you may have to read it.
Okay, there's, there's no official report, that's why. There's a bunch of handouts that need explanation.
Just some stuff, and that's, and not so much the zoning administrator as the...
Right, it's not so much from the zoning administrator's standpoint, it actually has to do with the grants.
Okay. Planning commissioner, do we have anything?
Yes. Harry submitted an electronic report, which I will read because you do not have, I just got an email. So, note, the January 2020 meeting of the Polat Planning Commission will be held on January 27th, the usual fourth Monday of the month. Item one, updates to zoning permit applications. This discussions continued from last month regarding information to be added to the town's existing zoning applications and format to be revised. Jonas Rosenthal had provided samples from other neighboring towns at the last PPC meeting for board review. It was generally agreed so far that, one, the fee schedule will be removed from individual applications and kept as one accompanying sheet. Two, the application number will be shown in the upper right-hand corner for ease of filing. Three, the property ID number will be added to the application. Jonas agreed to copy the board members with two samples of application formats that he considers good. Item two, review for the updates to the town's unified bylaws. Discussion continued from last month with the board focusing on updates to conditional uses and the definitions to these conditions. Jonas Rosenthal brought the board's attention to missing or inadequate definitions of the number of uses listed in various zoning districts. Commissioners will review these conditional uses prior to the January meeting in preparation for suggestions for addition of the missing information. Ray Duquette asked the board to provide language in the next update of the bylaws that will require any violations existing on a property to be removed before a new zoning permit is issued. This discussion will be continued next month. The above discussions led to the issue of closing out of zoning permits and the possible new requirement that the zoning administrator issue a certificate of completion when work prescribed by the zoning permit is complete and accepted by the Z.A. Further discussion will be carried into the next meeting. It was noted that installation of the utilities such as commercial solar, electrical generation facilities are regulated and permitted by the state Public Utilities Commission and are not subject to local zoning permits or approvals. Item three, enhanced energy plan. The chairman noted that there is no deadline to have final approval, excuse me, final approval of the draft EEP by the end of the month. However, clarification was made that the RRPC's contract for providing assistance to town expires this month. Harry advised that the RRPC has agreed to continue to help the Polat Energy Coordinator in his efforts to complete the plan in conformance with state and regional guidelines. End of report. And I had on the agenda to, for you all to, you know, discuss it. You had all been provided with energy plans via email. They were in your mailboxes at the last meeting. So, based on this, seems like there is no official approval that's needed. And Harry did not indicate one way or the other in his email. I don't know if maybe we want to ask Tom if he knows anything that was mentioned last night?
Do you have anything to weigh in on that, Tom?
Yeah, Harry shared with me that we have some months to work on this, or with the group, so...
So, we don't necessarily need to act tonight?
The impression I got is the select board did not need to act tonight on that. They could, but I would encourage select board if they have any inputs to come back with it. Harry, your email, I'll control you, can bring that information so we can discuss them as we work to the energy plan.
And I did talk, I did email with Harry after the last meeting, inquiring as to whether or not this whole, you know, discussion or approval or support of the energy plan needed to be warned as a special meeting due to the fact that it could be considered an addendum to the town's plan, which would require a special meeting. And he said that that still needs to be looked into. So, he's continuing to talk, to talk about that with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
The display is now over here on the energy plan that had been in the library.
With the different maps of where everybody was?
Yes, it's in the corner there.
That's the one that was in the library?
Yes.
He brought it over today.
I looked at the maps on the computer, but I couldn't, they were pretty teeny, I couldn't really pay that close attention to details.
He had, Harry had said in his, in an email to me on the 9th of December that he would still like that the select board complete their review of the draft and give me their preliminary approval at the next select board meeting. But that, that was on the 9th.
I looked it over and I, I don't really know, I really don't know how it's all going to unfold. It seems like a grave, it looks really pretty. It's a beautiful package, all wrapped up with a nice bow on it. But I don't know what's in it. I don't know what's in the box, is my feeling. I, I mean, they want to get rid of all fossil fuel and, and everything's going to be electric, but I just, I don't, I don't see that everything is in place to do this. And I don't even think by 20, by 2050, I don't think, I don't see where the state can pull it off. How everybody's going to be all solar and all electric and everybody's going to live happily ever after on solar and electric. It just, that's what that energy plan looks like. I mean, it looks like, to me, it looks like a big bunch of smoke.
It is.
You know, it's...
It's all smoke and mirrors.
You know, there's, there's absolutely no, I, I don't see how they plan on implementing it.
By force.
Well...
Is the only way they're going to do it.
I don't even know how they can implement it by force because there's nothing, you just can't do it.
I don't know if they know that they actually produce electricity with fuel currently, now?
They know.
So, how do you not burn fuel? Electricity doesn't just fall out of the sky, but...
But our electricity...
It does with a few windmills and everything else, but if the wind doesn't blow and the sun doesn't come out, we all sit here in the dark, it's not going to take long to catch on that.
Well, I think the...
We need to produce electricity to survive.
But they've already gone up, what, 10%? Electricity costs here this fall? I'm guessing 10%? I'm surprised there hasn't been an outcry about this add-on on the last couple of bills for the, to fight the Emerald Ash border. Look on the bottom of your bill.
Tax.
A tax.
Sure, tax.
Frank?
Tom had a good point, that maybe it should not be an energy plan, but more of a vision statement. And Polat's 2050 vision statement, for example.
That would be more accurate, I felt, from what, from what I read of it.
It's a goal. So, we're clear.
You did.
Vision. It can't even be a goal, I think it's just a vision, because I don't see anything you can really nail down. If you, if you have a goal, you've got to have some logical way to get there. There isn't nothing explained, as Mike said, it's empty box. So, we... Ask those questions of what, by making it a goal, how the state resources are going to help us as a town to obtain them. Give us that vision back, or give us that goal back, and give us something back that we can put some meat, potatoes, and hooks into, and achieve that 30-year vision, goal. You can pick all the words you want, but that's why I, I shared my thoughts right out there.
Doris, you had a comment?
Yeah, Jay and I went, in fact, he filmed for PEG TV program on last Saturday with, I guess it was week before, on climate change. You know, this is something that they're peddling around the state. And Robin Chestnut-Tangermann hosted this at the Rutland Hospital. And I think they asked this group, and he might be part of the, part of the group, he's on some commission. But one of the things that I found rather daunting, because I've been through this when I worked in corporate America, and I worked in the insurance industry, and I worked in the computer industry. We have a vision, and they didn't set goals as much as determine that these are the pace, this is the pace you will take, and this is where we're going to be. And once they have that in place, which has no foundation, then they're pushing to make it real. And I saw major, major, major layoffs in both industries. That was a result of this same type of, if you want to call it vision quest, where there is no substance below. I asked if you are changing all the industries in Vermont that cannot be polluting, and you are making it very difficult for people to commute, to find any work, how do you plan on keeping young people here? If you are only bringing in green industries, are they bringing in jobs for the people who live here? How are we going to keep our youth in this state? You know, it's an aging state. How, what are we doing? And what is this green plan going to do to make this state a livable place? And it's all right to set goals if they are realistic, but to put, this is putting an entire state on a path. The people who are putting this in place in 30 years will not be here to face the ramifications. I think that's one thing that is wrong with this type of development that is tremendously political. As I said, I saw it, there were political decisions and that were made in both of those industries, and there were recessions or whatever, layoffs because of those things. Here, you're taking an entire state that's one of the greenest states in the nation, and all of a sudden, we're a problem, we have to reduce our carbon, where they had planned just the last session, I think it was, to sell our carbon credits to California, which is a pit, you know? This makes no sense. And I will leave it at that. But as someone who lives here and was born here and looking at the changes, I would like to see young people be able to stay, and I would like to see the state of Vermont to go back to some kind of realistic management. And I would also like to see a lot of the decisions come back to towns, because your hands are tied in too many ways. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you think we'll continue this discussion at another meeting?
One point, and I'll finish it up, is there should be a public hearing possibly on this, and maybe even just bring it up as a topic of conversation during the, in the pre-town meeting, because the town meetings, where the school's gone out of the picture, is just like this little different... You could easily add more meat to the town meeting and have, affect and have it be like fast food dining, you know, or you drive through, it's almost, that's how my town meeting last, last year, I mean, you showed up and it was over.
Was there anything from Keith?
No.
No, nothing from the road foreman's report? The assessors?
No.
No. And Deb?
The report that Dave, or the information that Dave mentioned earlier, those are the copies that she's going to pass out to you now, so we can discuss what you need. We have some server issues with the computer, that John Freed is available at the earliest tomorrow afternoon, but in the meantime, we have no memory, we have no provouch, we aren't able to do anything that involves the server. He was able to send me an email and gave me some instruction on how to get to a point where we could have seen a resolve, but Windows is not allowing that to happen. So, he's going to come tomorrow afternoon and take care of that. So, it's going to affect some of our work flow for the next half a day.
Okay.
So, anyways, that's just an update there. Town report, petitions, if any of you guys are going to be submitting petitions, now's the time to be generating them, and be thinking about the town report, obviously. And that's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
So, this letter is from the Westport Fire Department about removing the old, taking down the old white building that once was the firehouse, and moving the monument over to that area to make, to establish a green space for the, for the monument, to improve the intersection. The fire department would like to know if the town would be able to help with the removal of the building and possibly they would put a monument to pass firefighters. They would like the town for help removing in the building in exchange for the use of the fire department property that the green parking would take up. And he's wondering if there's any committees in the town that would want to be involved in design that would benefit the village and fire department. Thank you for your consideration, Dave Hosley. We want, in order to do anything with the intersection, it would require the Vermont State to be involved, because it's a state-aided highway. And they had reviewed it at one time, to looking at the, changing the monument there. There would be, in my opinion, there would be huge benefits to getting that monument out of the center of that area. It would help with today's traffic. I think it would be more clearly defined who had the right of way and, and who was going where. There's a lot of extra traffic crossing paths because of the monument in there. And it's also hard for trucks to make that corner and stay on theirs, in their lane and go up the hill if they're coming from Upright. Joe Clark said tractor-trailers can't, can't stay in their lane and go up that hill if they're coming from Upright, because the corner's too, the road is too narrow.
Doris?
I'm not going to be the one who causes a big fight on this, but I think there will be, unless it is presented properly, that there will be just as many hell interruptions as there was the last time. One of the things that I guess I would ask is, Dave Hosley pointed out that you can't stop in the middle of the street and go read that monument.
Exactly, exactly.
You know, when I was a kid, we used to march down every Memorial Day and honor the servicemen at that monument. Things have changed a great deal, but that brought to mind that there are people now that, you know, all these people that are involved in their genealogy and things, that, I mean, we have people knocking on our door because they saw the name Connors on the, on the mailbox, you know, that from, they drop out of the sky. But anyway, Dave mentioned that as a positive. I have some concern, you know, like with using that firehouse, to begin with, there's very little parking. And it is, on our side of the town, really the only public, the only public building that can be used for meetings and things. I didn't, he didn't say anything about the firefighter's monument, but I guess my question would be, in the engineering of the green, and how much, how much space it would take, because that building is in terrible condition.
Right, it needs to go away, it's, it's not, it's not a good building. And it's of no value, it's just an old block building, it, it doesn't, it's not, there's nothing...
It's in, you know, I mean, working there.
Right, there's nothing special about it. It's not old enough to be, have any really cool structure, the only thing is, it's got a nice-looking roof on it.
Yeah, well, it's...
That could be removed and saved, but other than that, there's no value in that building. It would be best if it was gone, so...
Yeah, it would be better.
Do you want to be on the committee?
Pardon me?
Do you want to be on the committee?
What, what committee?
The committee that we need to establish to do this project. I think you would be great on that.
I would do that.
Okay, we'll get the ball rolling.
Pardon me?
Yes, we'll start to get the ball rolling.
Okay, you know, I think it's discussable, I would just like...
I think we need, I think we need to come up with a logical plan and, you know, and work with the, everybody that would be involved, but I think that, I think it would be better in that little area right there with, also with an established parking area, instead of everybody doing this...
Yeah, I think it's hazardous.
In front of the post office.
It's hazardous the way it is. The other thing is, you know, having worked inside that building on, you know, preparing food and things like that, there's, it's just, it's gone beyond, beyond use.
You don't have to tell me.
Yeah, and it's also, you know, the fire trucks have to get out and move. I really admire the fire department, I'm amazed at how fast they work for volunteers and, you know, I see that at face value as they go by very quickly. But in the meantime, I do think if they're asking the town, putting on another hat, to help with the, you know, demolition and getting rid of the, I guess it's cinder block building and so on, then there would be, have to be some kind of way to pay for that.
Well, right.
You know, whether it's just...
Right, but I asked Keith, he said that any of the cinder blocks could, and any of the concrete in that floor could be considered... Yeah, and it's also, you know, the fire trucks have to get out and move. I really admire the fire department. I'm amazed at how fast they work for volunteers. And, you know, I see that at face value as they go by very quickly. But in the meantime, I do think if they're asking the town putting on another hat to help with the, you know, demolition and getting rid of the, I guess it's cinder block building and so on, then there would be, have to be some kind of way to pay for that. You know, whether it's just.
Right, but I asked Keith, he said that any of the, the cinder blocks could, and any of the concrete in that floor could be considered clean fill and could go to the, to the pit. And they could be used at some point to crush for gravel or anything like that and the crushing. So there would be, they would need to get the slate removed. And then the wooden building would have to get crushed and gone. And that would have to get, go to a landfill, I would presume, I think.
You would probably sell the slate, couldn't you?
I'm sure they could, but it needs to be a concerted effort between the fire department. So, so far we got Dave and you. Would you put this in the minutes that we, we would be, I get to phrase it correctly so we don't spin everybody out. But looking, looking into this project, I mean, at some point we'd have to get involved with the state to see how they would want to redesign that intersection.
Mm-hmm, to get rid of the big hole on the side of the road.
Exactly.
Yep.
If we could get the ball rolling to get some interest in it and, and see what goes on.
How you sell it, marketing, sales on this will make a difference between what happened the last time and, and what could occur now.
The, uh, the cement blocks could go right into, why couldn't they just end up being dumped in the quarry?
They could be dumped in the quarry. They're clean fill or, but like Keith said, that you could take the, you could, you could just dash it in the, in the gravel pit. If we crushed again, we could use that.
Concrete makes good gravel.
Right, that crushes, that crushes up good for, for that, so.
Which brings up a question I had and I forgot. Could you use some gravel in that culvert by your house, filling those bumps again?
Oh, before somebody gets it bouncing off the road?
That'd be brought to Keith's attention to refill that.
Mike brought that up last week.
Okay.
As he hit that, yes, some of the people that come along really hit that hard.
Yep.
And especially when, you know, there's, there's snow. Those cones were covered up with snow a couple of times.
So has it been done yet?
Yeah, that was good.
If it was brought up last week, has it been done yet?
There was gravel added.
Right.
I contacted Dale and Perry and they, they added more gravel. So it was, at least didn't destroy the undercarriage of your vehicle or cause an accident.
It's blown out already.
It's coming back again already and it will every time it warms up.
Yeah, but they're just going to have to keep at it and keep it maintained.
Yeah.
If they couldn't get, you know, tire in that way.
Well, they wanted to put tire in it, but then the grader was down, so they couldn't spread the tire with the grader. So, but they still could put cold batch in it.
Well, exactly.
That would hold up better than the gravel, because gravel's not holding up.
Yep, do something.
Not the next three days, because it's supposed to be single digits.
Maybe following week.
Do you have more in the town clerk's number?
No, I just did it verbally because I was going to be here.
It's got two warrants to be signed at the, you guys all look at the warrants?
Oh, I need to follow that.
No. I'll start with you.
Oh, thanks.
And the server's down, was unable to finish printing the checks. There are two Excel sheets that I've set up for temporary warrants. The official warrants from Nemrick are, will need to be signed at the next meeting. But if these temporary jobs could be signed, that will cover the basis.
There's two official warrants because I made an error in someone's paycheck last week. So I had to adjust the federal withholding and that's on a separate warrant. And then I had to adjust the paycheck, so that's on another warrant. So there are two actual warrants and then there's two Excel spreadsheets that will cover today's bills and payroll.
Okay.
Must've got somebody to sign that because he never came to my house.
Uh, looks like there's three warrants here to sign.
There's four things, there's two official warrants and then two spreadsheets that I generated in Excel with a line for you to sign so that it's when I'm able to print checks tomorrow afternoon hopefully.
Yep.
Is somebody gonna, would be available tomorrow afternoon to sign checks?
Yes.
Yeah.
You guys, okay.
What time's John? Who knows?
We don't know.
Don't know.
So FEMA's having some trouble with staffing, so it's held up. Okay, healthcare plan. Okay.
Just call somebody.
Now, what did we decide? We, we looked it over. We just know that it's, it's gone up, right?
I need to contact someone and finish the enrollment or try that ten percent.
Okay. How much did it go up?
Fifteen percent.
So do you know what that turns into for a budget number? Do you remember?
Um, I don't remember, but I have put it in, we have discussed it.
Right.
We discussed it.
We discussed it at the meeting and of course I forgot already.
Yeah, and I don't have it, I don't have it in my head right now.
I don't have my book.
What percentage?
Fifteen.
Fifteen percent.
I mean, I think it's probably like five hundred dollars a month, but then you guys only pay half of that or somewhere there about, so that would be two fifty a month, so that would.
Three or four thousand dollars in the budget, something like that, probably, probably. Okay.
Oh, that's right, you weren't at that, okay.
A budget meeting there. How much? Oh, Bob's got some paper here.
We're going to go to change to twenty-four, five.
Okay.
What, three?
Just a little over three. It would be just a little over three.
Yep.
Okay. So we talked about it and we're, we weren't really, didn't see any, any real savings of going to a different insurance company and we didn't feel that the.
Well, we did look at it and there was a minimal savings, but then you have a smaller provider network and they're, they're not as well rated for their payment.
Right, that's what, that's what we decided. There would, a minimal savings and, and far, far less quality in, in the service.
Way more benefits with what?
So do we want to just go ahead and, and make a motion and have her?
I would make that motion.
Okay, tell me, I second that motion.
Hold on a second, what's the motion you're making?
Look at Julie, she'll tell you. She'll tell you what she needs to know.
To authorize me to.
Authorize me to enroll in the motion.
I'm, yeah, what she said.
To stand the plan that we have currently.
I see it.
And Chuck will second it.
Thank you.
So is there, is there, and there will be a motion to approve the warrants tonight?
Okay, after everybody's looked them over, everybody's looked them over, yeah. So we'll, we'll vote on this insurance. All in favor of the insurance?
All right.
Opposed? Carried. Now, everybody's looked the warrants over. I'll, somebody want to make a motion on the warrants?
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants.
Chuck, you want to second it? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Carried. So you guys get to do a lot tonight because Bob and, and John had to handle it last week, so.
Okay.
We'll just share.
We'll step up tonight.
The, the minute, no, I guess I'm not already talking about them yet. We got that part, right?
Oh, yeah.
We already approved them.
Tis the season.
Right.
Maybe we've gone too far.
Dolores. Dolores.
Dolores, you fall asleep on us?
You fall asleep?
Makes you sleepy. You're going to have to.
You sleep, Dolores.
You fall asleep on us, I'm sorry, that boring.
Yep. I was just going to tell you that Jay was shaking his head in agreement with when you said you'd be, you know, head up the committee on, you know.
I'm sure that made him happy. I've just been shedding, shedding things as possible.
This was going to be easy one to her.
Yeah.
I won't have to travel far.
I didn't. See anything in the minutes about the issue with the road grader?
You know, they, they came, the, the transmission leak was a, was a starter. Apparently the starter goes into a wet bell housing and the starter was leaking, it was leaking through the starter out of the, out of the transmission. There's a seal on the, the end of it. I was surprised. I didn't know anything about that. But apparently there's, the starter goes into a wet, a wet bell housing. And that's, that's what they found. The starter had a bad seal in it and it was letting the transmission oil leak out. They did a full evaluation of the rest of the. And it cost us what, fifteen hundred bucks or something?
A little over two. The invoice is in there.
The invoice is in there. Remember you showed it to me. But Keith said that instead of us trying to get the starter fixed and put it in, this is where the, the leak that started this whole fiasco last year. That's where it started leaking out of the, out of the starter. And then, so Keith said, I think we should have them change it because then there's no, there's no questions or anything in the mid, so. I don't know.
They're alphabetical and it's more tracks. Do you want me to find it? I don't think Keith was at the last meeting.
No, he hasn't been at.
That's why.
He was on vacation.
Oh, and it came up during, and it came up, that came up during check signing.
Tonight I met him right here headed for West Paul at six-thirty, so.
Twenty-one, twenty-one hundred to get a new starter put in. It was like thirteen hundred for the starter, something like that, and then labor from Springfield back.
I love it. The other thing that I saw in the minutes was the, the radar monitor in excess of five grand. You didn't act on that, right?
No, we're putting it, we're, we're putting that down.
Put that in the budget.
It's a wide item.
But wait, there's more.
There's more? You got more stories?
Well, yeah, we'll wait until the whole business.
Cool.
Gentlemen.
Excellent.
Grants, some grant opportunities.
That'll teach me to stay away for three meetings.
That's what you get, Chuck.
I'm going to prorate your pay.
No, we found out before that we can't do that.
Uh, I seem to recall there was somebody else.
That's what I said. It showed up a lot less than you and we still had the payer, the full shot. So, oop, let the gender suck out. The person. Okay, so we're good with that. No checks are signed, the warrants are all signed. Okay. Retirement plans.
And I'm here tonight, Dolores, did you notice?
Excellent, it's good to see you.
Do you have something to tell? This is the small business.
So I'm going to give you another Excel spreadsheet. And then the, um, the paperwork that you have in hand right now is from Fidelity, which is another institution that does, that offers the same things. Last time I took it to Vanguard. And, um, as best I can tell, um, so having talked to both of those companies, to set up a 401K would cost the town money annually for the administration of it. Um, the benefit of a 401K is a much higher dollar amount that can be contributed per year than in a simple or a simple IRA. But the, the dollar amounts for the IRAs would, I mean, they're high enough that we wouldn't be hitting those benchmarks anyways. And they're free to set up and they're free to administer and if, to the town. And, um, there is either a very minimal, like twenty dollars per fund fee that's paid out of the, out of the fund. So that would come off of the money that the employee has in their fund. So it would cost the town nothing. Um, and then Fidelity has no fees at all, so it wouldn't even cost the employees anything. And then the Excel spreadsheet that you have, I have blacked out names, but there's numbers there that show what their contribution would be if the town elected to do. There's two options for the simple IRA. One is a two percent, um, I don't remember what they called it. But basically the town can contribute two percent and then it's, it's not binding. So you, you say two percent of your pay goes into this and then the employee is required to do nothing. They don't have to do anything at all. Um, the other one is a match plan and so the town can elect to put up to three percent. So if I chose to only put one percent of my pay, you would only have to pay one percent of my pay. If I chose to put three percent, you would contribute a match of, of the same amount. And so the Excel spreadsheet shows two percent and three percent. And then there's totals at the bottom and it's also split out what comes from highway and what comes from general funds.
Okay, so if we put, if we put two percent, if we did the two percent and that's two percent and whether they put anything or not, they, they get the two percent, that would cost us at, these are at the current?
These are.
At the current pay rates?
Everything that we have in payroll to date and then the projected for the next pay period. So what, what I project for twenty nineteen wages would be.
Okay. So we would be looking at fifty-eight hundred and that's, that's a monthly?
That's the total.
That's for the year?
That's for the year.
Okay, fifty-eight hundred at two percent or seventy-eight hundred at three percent. Two, suppose, and, and that would be if everybody in the plan paid their three percent. So if anybody in the plan only wanted to kick in one percent, we would only match one percent. Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so basically, we're talking like a 401K.
We're talking about an IRA, a simple IRA. Well, and the back, if I may, the back information of all of this was, um, there's just been for years a unanimous kind of desire amongst town, eligible town employees for some sort of a retirement plan. And now the, you know, the voices are louder of folks who are interested in doing so. And at the budget meeting, it was lightly touched upon. And Julie and I primarily, Julie was asked to look a little bit deeper into it. So Julie did and went through and compared some plan options. So 401K traditionally, but these are options in lieu of a 401K, which would be a simple IRA, which is still a retirement plan option for employees who are eligible. And this opportunity was for you all to understand what it would cost for the town.
And the employee has to work forty hours a week?
So there are some, you can, if you want to talk a little bit more to.
So there, um, no, they don't have to be full time to participate in this program. Um, there were some restrictions. There, well, they, the companies that I talked to had maximum like restrictions, which were, so you can't set anything higher than that. But it's like, you could set it so someone has to make five thousand dollars a year and they have to have made five thousand dollars a year for the past two years. So you could set, that's your maximum. But you could lower it all the way down to when, on day one, you start working, you can participate in this program and you can set the amount of money that they make to whatever you want. I mean, you guys could participate in it at a thousand dollars a year, should you choose. Cause you're paid out of payroll. Should you choose to set the bar that low?
But the employer, the town could establish some criteria.
Yes, we can establish some criteria, but we can't go over that benchmark of five thousand dollars in the current year and the previous. thousand dollars in the current year and the previous two years as well.
See, the difference between a 401K and these simple IRAs, the 401K is more of a, from what I understand, more of a plan for a larger number of employees. It's more of a managed type fund. These simple IRAs are kind of like a small, a small group of people. You get you get the tax benefits because it's a retirement plan and and then you could do either the the match type.
Right, and the employee manages what funds the the money goes into. So for like, so if we set this up and I was included in it, I would be able to say, I project my retirement in this year and I want to aggressively grow my funds. So I would I would put it in something that's more of a high risk, high reward fund. Whereas Deb might say, I'm older than she is and I don't want to aggressively manage my funds, so I'm going to be more conservative with my my money. This is simple math.
Okay, well, I just, well, I just, we're low bar, we're low bar, she's old.
She's more experienced.
Yeah.
She's she's less of a risk taker than you, so.
Yeah, it's the same age as me. She's just a little harder, I know.
More conservative. But that's exactly the right way of explaining it.
Yeah.
This this option, I think, is.
Every time I get my statement, it keeps going up, so I guess.
It will be sued tomorrow.
But this this would be a good option to to open up for for the employees. I mean, and you went through, this would be for the the school, oh, the private library too? Did any of those people or not, or is that just?
Those two individuals are on that list.
Are on that, okay. So that's what it would be, and we would, we need to make this decision before we finalize the budget?
Yes.
Okay. But we don't, we don't necessarily need to make that this decision tonight?
No, and in fact, if you were to start that for, it would be twenty twenty one, you would be able to to enroll anytime between January and October of twenty twenty one. So there's ti- like, there's time, but it just needs to be a decision that goes into the budget. And so I was trying to get all of it.
Okay, so.
Twenty twenty, right? You would be able to enroll between Jan- January and October of twenty twenty?
Yes, because we'll be twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, twenty one.
Twenty twenty one, yeah.
But they, I mean, if we decided to go into this, we could establish this plan and they could start putting into it. As soon as we established the plan, the town wouldn't, could have the plan going, but we wouldn't have to match anything till after.
July one.
July.
The year started.
July first. Once that year, then we would match. But if they wanted to be starting in January, putting money in, we could start doing it. We just wouldn't match anything until our new budget kicks in. Correct?
I believe so. I mean, we have to, we have to start them, so I don't know if we have to.
Oh, we may not be able, okay. So so it it would be an option that could start July of twenty twenty?
Yeah, because you don't have to, you don't have to make any deposits until the April fifteenth deadline. So if we started it for the the year twenty twenty, we don't have to make, we as in the town doesn't have to make our contribution until April fifteenth of twenty twenty one.
Okay, cool. Okay. So.
I went through that with my other place.
Does anybody have any more questions about this pension plan? Or it's not, is it called a pension plan?
No.
Retirement plan?
Right.
A simple IRA.
Simple IRA, like an individual. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I I believe it's it's very nice. So.
Shall I add this?
Add this on the agenda.
Business?
Yep, please do, I guess, if anybody has any other comment.
Only money.
Question or?
Well, if you want to retain good employees, why?
So, it all turns into how?
Yep.
Thank you, Julie, for all your.
Right, indeed. Thank you for both, for all your work and getting all this laid out and stuff in in a way that we could certainly understand easily. Okay, so we got, and so then, we need to go through, we need to go through some stuff for the budget. What do we got left for the budget? We have, uh.
No highway numbers.
Right, but I'm just, we what?
I still have no highway numbers.
Oh, great, yeah. He's got a lot of work to do, don't he? Okay. Do you have anything else on your memo that you, I think we touched everything?
Yeah, I think that's all.
Great, thank you both. Um, emergen- emergency management, God, nothing. Health officer, nothing. Treatment plan, oh, wait, you could just set one. I'm going to try and meet with Jill about the treatment plan in the course of the next two weeks. I reached out to her and tried to sit down, but she's not seeing that she can continue at just the three percent increase. She's looking at a substantial increase. Started at forty five and she really wanted fifty five hundred a month when when we started, and that was still a thousand dollars more cheaper than the other guy. But she's saying that she's, after she's running her numbers, what she's got going on, she's not even breaking even right now. And she doesn't see that that's, it's not, it's not a sustainable number. And I reached out to the lady from Rural Water Supply who works the state, and she said that she's surprised we can get it done that cheap. She said that, you know, sixty five or more is, would be well in line of what of what she sees throughout the state. So we've we've been very fortunate to have a very great rate for a very long time. It's just hard to make all these steps in one step. So I'm going to try, I'm going to talk to her about options to see what, see what we could come up with. The the people that you've been talking to about, this, I mean.
Yeah, um, one of the things that he looks at is a kind of an assessment of the median household income in our area and whether or not the rates that we have are affordable.
Uh huh.
And he and he projected our rate going up beyond where it went up and then over the next three to four years to somewhere in the eight hundred dollar range as still being in the affordable range. I don't know that there is a delineation between sides of the town. I don't know how to say this nicely, but I think there's probably a higher median household income in Polat versus West Polat.
West Polat Village, yeah.
So I don't know that he has the data to take that into consideration. And I certainly don't see, I don't see it being palatable for the people that are on the system to have an immediate increase.
Yeah, we've already just went up over a hundred dollars. And it would be, to go another thousand dollars a month would be another hundred dollar increase a year.
Yeah, we have, the way it works, the way it works with our budget is that we, our expenses would be covered, our expenses and our revenue would offset and leave exactly one of those payments for the loan. And then the general fund pays the rest of it. If we had the thousand dollar a month increase, we would basically have to pay the loan out of the general fund.
They're complete, they're complete, though.
Pretty much.
Okay. Maybe, I mean, you sent that to me. If if we could have that for the next meeting, maybe a little, a little printout of that so we can look at the numbers sitting at the next meeting, that would be great. And I'll see, I'll talk to Jill and see. They're, I think they're doing a great job there. They're trying really hard to come up with some solutions. We may be looking at some of fair amount of work there to get this switch over. I mean, that's the thing, you bring a contractor in there for two or three days and you've got five or ten grand, you know, to do, to change the plumbing around to to get this holding tank and an engineer stamp or something like that. So I, I want to get get some more input on that and and stuff like that. So I hope to have more to report by the next meeting. And those are just things I want to bring up so everybody knows what we're, what we're aware of and what we're looking at. We'll try and figure it out and go forward. So. Okay, thank you. Personnel policy amendments.
So, may I?
Please do.
Um, so with that, the last couple of meetings, it's been on the agenda, and we've only had the three gentlemen here, and we've been waiting so that everybody could be here to talk about.
Merry Christmas.
To talk about the personnel policy amendments. So what that would entail would just be, I would say, formally expressing whether or not you are in support of the adjustments to the comp time, sick leave, and vacation time. As we had discussed several meetings prior, that it is not really the time, nor did I feel like I was the person to be the one responsible for adjusting the entire personnel policy. The idea is that should the town decide to move forward with those personnel, with the, that vacation, sick and comp time adjustment, it would be something that would be established as a change that would be adopted for January twenty twenty or with, you know, town plan and whatnot. However, it's my understanding that those actual changes and that actual bank would not go into effect until twenty twenty one, as twenty twenty, you know, theoretically the guys have, the the guys have earned their vacation time this year for twenty twenty. So it would be used in twenty twenty and then moving forward is when we would adopt the new policy, which would be that they would be gifted to their vacation time the beginning of the year of twenty twenty one. And, right? Yeah. Because the way it stands now basically is they are earning their vacation time. So for every pay period that goes by, they're earning time towards their vacation bank. Whereas with the new plan, it would be there is no more earning, there is a gifted plan, which is January, the clock strikes midnight on January first, and they have a fresh new bank of vacation time to use. So that was.
I don't see that you can have them work for twenty twenty without either earning or having that bank.
Well, they've earned it from this past year, right?
Right, but they accrue whatever you want. So you can't have them work all of twenty twenty without any accruals happening during twenty twenty or a bank going. Do they not get their bank till the end of the year? I thought they got their bank at the beginning of the year to use it from during the year. So my understanding was that they would get the bank from January of twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, and and still carry over the accrued time that they had from.
They keep this time and then at the end of twenty twenty, and they have for forty hours, so in December of twenty twenty, they can have forty hours that they have not used that can be carried. Everything else has to be paid. And then, because they had earned it.
Yeah.
And then, the following year, anything that they had over forty was, is gone.
Yeah.
Because that was, that came from the bank, not the.
That that was a gifted, that was a gifted, okay, right.
So is this going to be in writing in this new policy manual?
You all have it.
We have it in writing, but it's not.
It would need to be, and you all had copies for a while now, and it's been, it would be then reprinted in the overall personnel policy.
Okay.
That would get put in, and then we would ask that the employees sign it to acknowledge that they hereby agree to it. They don't have to agree to it, they also don't have to participate if they don't want to. But we would, the idea would be to have everybody review it and sign it.
And what happens if they don't sign?
An employee reserves the right to not sign a personnel policy, but when agreeing to work for an organization, they have to follow it or they don't have to work for the organization.
Exactly.
For, you know, and at risk of sounding a little brash, but, right, they don't have to sign it, but they also don't have to work if they don't follow it.
Right, so, so we give you this policy and this is the way it is, and you can go by the rules or.
Yeah.
And if you choose not to, we're not going to bend the rules. These are our rules that we're going to stick by and say this is.
And I mentioned this at a meeting prior as well. I don't remember if it was during executive session or during the open meeting, but I'll state it again, that the purpose, there is some confusion that folks think the purpose of a personnel policy is to protect the employees. Unfortunately, the purpose of the personnel policy is, yes, to provide the employees with a safe and healthy work environment, but the real purpose is to protect the business, which is the town. And the reason why we have one of these is to make sure that the town is operating with its best interests in mind, therefore allowing for, you know, a safe, positive, enjoyable work environment. So.